I will call to order the Monday, November 13th Select Board meeting. My attendants are Denise Luciara, Alec Rich, and myself, and Tom Manager. And we'll turn it over to you guys.
Okay. We'll call to order the meeting of the Norton Finance Committee, November 13th, 2023, attended by Isaac Mitchell, Tracy Mann, Sandy Allerhead, Zach Soss, and Paul Schlecker, and myself.
All right, we're going to call the School Committee to order Monday, November 17. November 13. Thank you, Peter. Glad you're here, buddy. Obviously, myself, Nick Flaker, Justine, and Dan, all in attendance with Jen and Christine as well.
Okay.
All right, good. All right. Train project update. Let's get this thing going.
So before we begin, I'd like to just take a moment to recognize that Norton lost one of its sons with the death of Brad Brownwell on November 8th. And obviously, very sad for his family and friends. And Brad was a lifetime Norton resident, Norton High School graduate. He was the Chair of the School Committee, and he was also a member of the Select Board. Probably leaving out a lot of other stuff that Brad did for the town. So I would like to start with a moment of silence for Brad if we could. All right, thank you, everybody. Appreciate that.
We should probably do the Pledge of Allegiance too.
Yeah. Peter?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the universal public, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, back to the agenda then?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Jerry.
Oh, yeah, and Norton Media is here recording, so isn't it Norton Media?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I didn't... Yeah, I'm like, I don't know what they can do behind the camera.
And we're back here to go.
Oh, okay, okay. So if anybody else is recording, we just need to know.
We are also recording.
Live streaming.
Thank you, okay.
So we have a few updates for you tonight at the request of the Select Board and the Finance Committee. First on our agenda tonight is the Train Project update. I have Christine here, as well as our Director of Facilities, Blake Lazzott, to answer any specific questions that you may have. So far, we have been moving along. One big outstanding item that is still out there with Train is the hookup of the solar panels at Norton High School. All four other buildings are up and running and have been connected. Unfortunately, we are still waiting for...
Just witness documents to be retrieved back.
So there's documentation from a subcontractor that somehow got kind of lost in the middle between Train and National Grid. And it's one of those situations where everyone's kind of pointing at each other and saying that this is what's happening. So once we get those documents back, they should be able to connect Norton High School. It really is a flip of the switch at this point. So we're still waiting on that. And Christine has some information on the financials that she'll share with you as well.
So the only payment that we have left is to release the retainage, which is about $472,000. So far, though, we have gotten a total rebate of $220,058. And we've also sent back to the town almost $350,000 since FY '22, the end of that fiscal year. Just over the past three months, we've sent over about $153,408, and that includes around $60,000 that we sent last week.
So right now, we're not ready to send back the retainage to Train because we still have those items that are outstanding. Wade, do you want to address any of the other items that are still up there that we're waiting on?
No, we're pretty much down to a punch list item with them, so we should be wrapping those up shortly. Small, regular construction items.
Wade, no recourse for the lost money that the town's not getting by having them offline all this time?
When were the other schools turned on? Was it like recent? Was it generated over the summer?
Two of them were done, I believe it was JCS and Norton Middle School was May. And LG was the very first one, correct me if I'm wrong, Wade, maybe right before, maybe April? And then the Yale was this fall.
Does the school department pay its own collector bills, or is it done through the town? Is it fixed to expenses? How is it?
We can borrow bills, all of our own utility bills.
So have we seen the utility bills drop as a result of those being turned on? Any... Too early to tell.
I think it's too early to tell. We have some savings, but some of that was some of the other solar projects in the town that we benefit from, like the... is that the Pearl Street solar? So we see those come in, but those aren't affecting the project yet. So they don't guarantee savings until it's substantially complete, which will be after the high school.
We have seen rebates, $220,000 worth of rebates so far, which is great in that it gives us the ability to return those funds to the town for payments as well.
And aside from the panels, there was a ton of upgrades to the infrastructure. Has that been done as well, Wade, that should be saving some things?
Yep, the wall is all installed, all the HVAC equipment's all been installed, all that's been done. It's all been calculated. We're working on an energy savings for sure there. Water saving devices have also been installed, so there's definitely going to be a savings, but it's all set. But it's just hard to calculate at this point. We just get into the heating season right now.
Any other questions regarding the Train project?
Nope. Do you guys have your own agendas, or are we just working off ours here?
Yeah, we're just here to...
Working off this?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so Athletic Complex and Building Project update?
Sure. So the Athletic Complex is just about at substantially completed. We are waiting, just like with the Train project, we have a punch list of items that still need to be done. One of those items up until about a week and a half ago was the outside lighting at the flagpoles. And I don't know if you've driven into the complex at night over these last few weeks, but that has been done, and it actually looks so beautiful when you're driving in. The flag is lit up right next to the superintendent's office, and then when you drive around to where it says the Norton Veterans Memorial Field with the three different flags there, that is all lit up, and it looks absolutely beautiful. So we are waiting on a few other items before we are ready to release that retainage as well and move towards that substantial completion. We'll talk about other specific items that are going to be coming up, and then Christine and I have some financials for you as well.
So again, with the Athletic Complex, we're right down to punch list items. The contractor was out a couple weeks ago to walk the property, just to double check everything that ourselves and the engineers wrote down that need to be fixed. A lot of just loose gates, cracks in tennis courts, stuff like that that they're going to be coming back and working on. So all small stuff, a couple rips in the turf, which is all warranty items, they come back, they take care of, stuff like that. Home plate was installed wrong, so they're coming back to install it to refix that as well. So those are all kind of like small items, kind of things that we handle as we go along, and we should be done much sooner.
So Wade, is anything need done with the pit? Is that the last field that hasn't been touched, or...
So the pit was never originally part of this at all. That was not part of the actual project. So we have not done anything to that, which is actually good news. Nobody's been on it, there's been no wear and tear, so it actually looks better now than it's looked in a very long time, just from not being used at all. So it's actually in really good shape over there. The tennis courts are up and running. The area where the dirt pile is, we just can't get equipment on that right now. It's just so bad, it's rocky, and we tried vibrating it out and getting some seed down on it, and it just won't take. So we're probably going to have to address that area come springtime.
Any update on the soar tying?
No, we're still waiting to hear back from them. We did the study, and we're waiting for a cost estimate from them.
From the engine?
As of right now, to be clear, liquids from the high school and the Yale school are still being... They're part of the septic system, they're part of the sewer system. So that's flowing, the solid's the same at both schools, so we still have to pay to get them pumped. But as part of this study, we're hoping to get the Yale and the high school directly hooked up to sewer, so we can get all of it taken care of at once.
Do you want to share some financials with you from the Athletic Complex as well? When we went forward with this commuting fields, we wanted to make sure that our sports teams at Norton High School and Norton Middle School, and then all of our community leagues have first access to our fields. And that has been the priority between Wade, Aaron Sundberg, who's our Athletic Director, and then this past spring and summer, we had Tim LaConte, who was kind of handling a lot of the booking and scheduling for us at a stipend rate. And so that has been really great. We do not charge any of our local sports organizations unless there is something like a custodian that needs to be available or ground supervision. We have also been able to bring in a pretty decent amount of funding. So from March of '23 to June 30th, we brought in $41,451 in rental fees for the Athletic Complex. And about $10,000 of that was spent, whether it was for signage, trash barrels, things that we needed to kind of get out of the gate and get rolling. As I mentioned, stipends for people to help with the scheduling and being onsite. It's really important for us to have a site manager there when you have a big tournament or multiple teams throughout the day. And then since July 1st through today, we have collected $51,062. And again, we have some expenses this year so far, but so far, our total profit is $63,000.
Do we have a revolving account for that?
Yes, it actually goes into the regular athletic revolver, athletic revolving account, and then there's a special line for the Athletic Complex. So any payments that we have for the complex itself, whether it is police details or custodial supports, all comes out of there. And of course, if we were to need a police detail for a tournament, those charges would be passed along to whoever is renting the space as well.
So you're seeing that based on the income that you're getting, you're able to cover any kind of like annual maintenance that will have to take place for the field?
Fields need installing, we're cheap, so we haven't had to really spend any money on maintenance, but to get out of the gate, as Dr. O'Neil mentioned, it's those small things just to get us going. Trash barrels, that were a part of the original project, the gator machine, which we need to groom the field, to make sure the field's being groomed. And I also like to add too, I think this has been awesome for the community. I think we heard our board, we heard the community cry about letting our youth groups on these fields. Originally, when we had these fields built, we had locks on them, but locks have all been removed. The fields are open to the public, everybody can use them, anybody can use them. And then when we do schedule an event, that's when that site supervisor's there to make sure that the field's ready to be rented out. So it's kind of been... It's been nice for the community, but it's also been a good way for us to grab some income, to make sure that we can pay those maintenance items as they come down the road.
I think one of the most amazing things is that there are kids out there every single day, whether it is an actual organized practice, or a game, or it's middle school students that came down with a soccer ball, or the lacrosse sticks that throw around in practice. It's been really, really great. Last spring, we found that we were telling kids they couldn't be hanging around, sometimes they were leaving trash. And what we did is we reached out to families directly, and we said, we want everyone to be able to benefit from our fields, to use our fields, we want our kids there. Please remind your children that this is a source of pride for our community and to pick up after themselves. And kudos to our families and to our kids, because they've really responded to that, and they've done a nice job, so.
That's smart. And then one fan takes pride in the field, because I quoted a field every day to cover my team, cover the Lancers, and that field looks beautiful!
Thank you, Peter. So if you have other profits from, you know, the rental fees, are you able to use those profits for anything else with the athletic programs, like keeping fees down for families who, you know, work for the children playing sports, or anything else, or is it just for field maintenance and things that pertain to the fields themselves?
It's just for field maintenance right now, because it's in the facilities account, which is where all of our other rental income comes from, so we were housing in the same area. So it's still right now for maintenance and not for the athletic fee reduction at the time.
But we had just reduced the athletic fee, what, two years ago?
Yes.
So that and the bus fee, we did reduce prior to this.
To Wade's point, the maintenance is going to get priced here as a moving line as a consultant, so it's kind of a need for...
And I think too, we see a lot of communities now that have maybe did their turf project 10, 12, 15 years ago, and are now having to go back to the community to ask for additional funds to replace the turf. We're hoping that over the years, we'll be able to build up this account, and therefore, when it comes time to replace the turf, we are not looking for a $6, $7, $10 million ask at town meeting again, that we're able to put some of this money towards it. I can't promise it'll be enough to totally replace those fields at that time, as we know, costs are just increasing exponentially every single day. So our hope is that we will be able to do that at some time. And if all of the site and we're flush with cash, which miracles happen, I guess, the School Committee could always discuss if they wanted to receive that money.
Has there been any discussion about turning on the lights in the afternoon? I know I've heard from some people that, you know, get stopped 4:00 at night now, and, you know, they want to go over there and walk, or whatever it is, and it's bish tack. Is there any bit of talk, maybe turning them on from 4:00 to 6:00, or 4:00 to 7:00, at least some lighting, so people can utilize them while we're in the...
So parking lot and the high school all have lights that are all attached to the building. We've never let up the track before, even the old track, we didn't do that. So right now, it's getting dark early, most of our sports team, our football team's still practicing on that field, so nobody could really get on that field until after football practice anyways, so it was something, not that we gather discussed, no. It does cost money to turn the lights on still.
Yes.
And I think it's great that people are talking about the fact that they're interested in that. I have them reach out to us, I haven't heard from anyone that there's a need, or...
We just saw some chatter on social media about it, and, you know, I mean, I don't think it's... I don't think it's unreasonable to ask, to be honest with you. I mean, compared to other things you see out there, but...
Because we have to think about too, how many people are actually going to show up?
I don't know.
Right, when it's this cold and we're paying to have all these lights on, you know, then we'll have somebody else on social media thinking, are we wasting our money? You know, you can't win with social media. I just say that yet again, I say it every meeting, to give us a hint of my last day sitting here.
Wade, have you seen savings, maintenance that you don't have to do more than that?
Yes, just the two... So we have two grounds people that work for us, and just the time that we've been able to pull them away from cutting those areas, from seeding those areas, from taking care of those areas, that's been a huge savings for us, just having them do other stuff and not be tied to the high school properties as much. So we've definitely seen a savings there. We have that pretty well calculated, I think, going into this, the man hours and that, as well as the materials that we'd be spending on those fields. That field every year got, believe it or not, that football field stadium every year got topped with topsoil. Every single year, we brought in a company to throw that down. I mean, we spent a lot of money on that field, and as we all know, all it took was one bad day to kind of ruin that grass that was on that field. But it's been nice, it's been nice freeing up those guys and having them take care of other things around the five schools.
Any other questions about the Athletic Complex? We talked a lot about the schools, I can't wait to hear about your buildings. I feel like it's been all schools tonight.
So if you've driven by, you noticed that the senior center is completely enclosed now, they're working on the inside. Last week, they were doing the ductwork for the HVAC and installing the sprinkler system. So hopefully, we're still on target for our certificate of occupancy in June. Everything has been going smoothly. And then on the town hall, they've started putting up walls now, I don't know if you've been by. We're hoping to have our parking lot back again by Thanksgiving was the goal, so hopefully. I noticed they deliver a lot of gravel on Saturdays, so they must be getting ready to pave. They've had to relocate a lot of utilities. You don't realize how much there is until they start working on drainage, fiber, electric, gas, water, and now they're working on the septic system. We hear every week for the last month and a half that the septic tank is coming Thursday, so hopefully, it's coming Thursday, and they get that in, and then they can pave the parking lot. But everything, company's been great to work with, and things are moving along on both projects.
What's the date for that one?
July.
July of this year?
Yeah.
Wow. Wow, I know.
That's great.
Yeah, the community center looks really good. I saw lights on it the other night when I was driving by.
Yeah.
It's getting exciting to see that. How's everything budget-wise with you guys?
Good. So the senior center came in a million under what the estimators were saying.
Really?
So they had cut a lot out that hopefully, they can add back in now.
Yeah.
And the town hall, the original estimate was $2 million under, so...
That doesn't happen often.
Most chances it happens.
I know there were some extras, because they hit a lot of huge boulders when they were getting, but it won't be that great of a cost, so...
Are you guys doing new furniture and stuff like that?
Yes.
For both buildings?
Both buildings.
Yeah.
And like in the town hall, they have the panic buttons at the windows and conference lodge selectmen meeting room that can be used by different groups. So it'll be, it'll be nice.
Mike, what's the procedure for them tapping into the million savings, or you're already at $2 million for the town hall? Is it just a free for all, and they can spend it, or is it some kind of a back through the Finance Committee, or back to the town meeting, or...
Well, they've been authorized to spend it, but they're not looking just to spend it. They're being very frugal, and, you know, they'll just be able to add back some of the things that were cut out, so you don't have a nice senior center building that's empty, doesn't have the pots and the pans and the, you know, plates, dishes, whatever they need for their kitchen, doesn't have AV equipment. And so all that stuff was cut out, and it's being added back in.
That's good to hear, because for a while there, it seemed like so many things were being cut out of that project, that you wonder, like, what is it really going to be like, you know, for the members in there? So that's good to hear, that they can bring some of it back.
And the food pantry will be over at the senior center too.
Yeah.
I'm checked.
Yes.
So Mike, when you say it came in a million on the budget, does that include the gift that we have from...
No.
So you got an extra $2 million to spend, is what you're saying? Or how's that being calculated?
There... The way the gift is looked at is that's to reduce the debt.
Okay.
So there'll be nothing added, I thought that strictly. The way it's structured is the attorney said that when we're ready to go out to do our final borrowing, he'll cut the check, and so it will go to reduce the final borrowing.
And what was that, a mill?
Last time, it was 1.6. So they're not looking at spending that at all right now.
Any questions for you, any questions about senior center or town hall? Anybody else?
And I will say, the architects gave me two good reports this week, because I asked them, I said, you know, we're going to be having to budget pretty soon, we need to know what it's going to cost our utilities for those two buildings. So they gave a report today to look at, so...
What about the existing town hall? Is there any decisions made on that?
I went to the last building committee meeting to... Fire chief, to get that clarified, because they're going to know what they're going to be doing as far as renovations. And right now, they say it's staying. All that's coming down is the garage where the food pantry was. And I know the fire department plan to at least go over to take up the entire brick section of the building. You know, they need more space. You have female and male firefighters in the same bunk area, and so they definitely need to do some work.
And Mike, so that people know, one of the problems being that the wall that's joining the brick is part of the original gymnasium, so there's an issue there, is how it's tied in, whether or not you could tear down beyond that and not have structural issues and stuff. So it wasn't a quick idea that, okay, let's just tear down the gymnasium, because you need to put up another wall where it was and stuff, so it would be very pricey to...
And so we needed clarification on that, because we can't move forward talking to an architect about a cost to do some design on, you know, interior renovations if we don't know what's going to happen with that.
So just a quick question, because when I was going to the PPC meetings, we were talking about that, and as part of the original project was to remove that part of the building. So how does that work with the budget?
So that was something that was cut out, that was $750,000, and...
Cut out demolition of that, and then rebuilding, because remember, we talked about...
Refacing, I think.
Yeah, we talked about that.
The demo and rebuilding that wall, the total was $750,000, and that has been cut out.
So I mean, that's, you know, that's a big chunk of money right there that might have led to...
That's part of the $2 million.
The $2 million, yeah, exactly. That's a big part of it.
So was anything earmarked for the rental of fire, or just demolition?
Earmarked for what?
For the renovation of the firehouse itself?
Not yet, no.
Okay.
Not as part of this project. That'll be something we'll go through capital when we have some direction.
Who decides... Sorry, my brain's going. Who decides on if we're saving $2 million, and all of a sudden, we're like, hey, you know what, we want to do X, Y, and Z? Who makes that final decision? Do we just leave it up to the hands of the architects and contractor?
It's the building committee.
Okay, so do you make the final call on what...
Gets added back.
Gotcha, okay. So if you do nothing with the town hall, you get this brand new beautiful town hall, you get this ice on there, I mean, are we going to do something to aesthetically make it look better, or is that up to the building committee as well?
Depending on what we decide to do for renovations, we'll probably go back through the building committee.
So we learned a hard rule with Station Florida, I don't want to cut it, that you've got to make sure that you maintain the heat and all that, and humidity and all that to keep the building from turning into a mold and all. So it's an expense there, because the infrastructure's old.
Stationware?
Yeah. You know, but, but yeah, the infrastructure's going to be maintained as well if you're going to keep it up. So I mean, you weigh that too, it still might be worth maybe putting up that new wall at some point and getting rid of the top of the building, you know?
Remind me, was that supposed to be parking? Was that... Were there going to be parking spots where the old building was?
Yes.
Yeah. So where are we making up for that parking?
They're not, they're just... What's left is...
Okay. How many spots? I can't remember.
I don't remember, I told you.
Yeah.
Maybe about four, five spot, three or four. Three or four.
Thank you.
Ask Peter.
Ask Peter, yeah. All right. Thank you for the update, it's exciting. Anything else, or are we ready to move on? All right, school traffic congestion update?
Sure. So we were hearing from Traffic Safety Committee that the Plain Street over near LGN was a problem, specifically drop off and pickup. Families were lining up very, very early and, you know, trying to get that fast spot, parking there along Plain Street. And as we know, that road is extremely narrow, and right where LGN is, is there's a little crest of a hill as well, so people were going up and down the street. So people were going up and down the street and it was, it was not safe. So Christine and myself, Wade, along with Mr. Higgins, who's the principal at LGN, and Officer Mark Burkashad spent some time kind of looking at the traffic patterns, sitting there and watching, and then came up with a couple of different options. And what we've done, and it seems to be working fairly well so far, is that instead of a single line, we moved things a little bit to make it a double drop off line. So when families come in to drop off or pick up, they create a double, a double line all the way through, right up to the sidewalk. They line up at the sidewalk, the buses come in, kids get out or kids get back on the bus, and then they pull probably five or six cars forward from one line and then they do the alternating line. And what we've found is that there are still a few minutes, both in the morning and in the afternoon, where there's probably somewhere between three to five cars sticking out on Plain Street. But it's become pretty, pretty quick. The drop off process went from about 18 to 20 minutes down to about six to seven, which has been really, really great because so many more families are already in that parking lot before, as soon as the, you know, the team is ready to get them off the buses. What we have had to do a few times is Mr. Higgins has had to reach out to families and just remind them, you can't be there at 1:30 in the afternoon. Your child does not get out until 2:00. And so we just keep reminding them, please do not line up any, any earlier than 2:00 or 1:55. So we're working on that and, you know, thank you to the community and to the safety committee as well as Christine and Wade and Tom and everyone for, you know, figuring out a way to do it that actually didn't cost us anything, which is great. And so, you know, we've had a few conversations about the White House that is right there on the edge of the LGN property. It was bought by the solar company when they began that process many years ago. And, you know, I know that it's changed ownership a few times in the last few years. We're, you know, would love to have some conversations with other boards and departments about if we could take over that spot. We think that would be a great place if you could either make it into additional parking. It would give us space to go around LGN because if you're actually looking at that third grade wing, the property line and the fence is maybe a foot away from the side of the building. So you really can't get around. But if we were ever able to do that, you could actually drive around LGN, have them drop off in the back like they do at JCS, you know, it would really alleviate that traffic problem. So just a few ideas that we can throw in.
The house isn't being in right now.
It is.
Yeah, so.
There's a light on every night. I mean, somebody's got to be paying the electric bill.
Are they paying the taxes, Mike, or are you?
There are lights on in there.
So I think the solar company stole all of the, the most of that.
Perhaps you could donate it.
Are they approachable?
I'll talk, I'll talk to you about this so you can show me what you want to, what you want to do there.
Absolutely. And I think it's important to know that when the solar company came in, we were promised $25,000 for the LGN playground.
We'll take the house.
We'll take the house. So I think that's, we never saw that. So I think that's important for us to bring back to that company.
There's no more septic over there now, right?
Correct.
So you could do, actually do better on the school.
You absolutely could, yeah. And parking at LGN is, is a challenge anyway. It's just, it's a small school. You know, we, one of our concerns is families dropping off parking at the, at Virchell and walking across the street. There's no sidewalk there, which I know the traffic and safety committee are looking at and looking at grants to fund some of those changes. But it is, you know.
Please buy your access to the.
Absolutely. And I've been there a few times and seen families walking down the street like to and from their homes because they live so close.
Me.
Yep. I saw one mom one day with a wagon and I thought, oh my gosh, this was a good dress. So anything that we could do there, ease of access and just really increase parking would be really wonderful.
And, and the LGN was cool, opened in 1960.
I think from a community standpoint too, I mean, if you ever go down there during the week for baseball, everyone parks, all up and down that, you know, kids running across the road. It is, you know, it would definitely be a huge help to, to, over there.
And I would love to see sidewalks as well, but the road itself is so narrow, I don't know how that would really work.
That would take away parking.
Yes.
The hazard parking.
Yes, right up on the curb.
Yeah, great.
But if they put in sidewalks, they'd be up with the grass.
Yes.
The street probably definitely is wide enough for sidewalks. And it would be great to have a sidewalk coming from Pine Street.
Yes.
All the way past the school, at least to the bike trail.
Mm-hmm.
And it would be a nice.
That would be great. Do we know if that solar farm is up and running? Because my understanding is that it's not.
Right. It wasn't last I knew, so I'll check. It has not, but they're missing the same paperwork.
They're away in the National Grid, good luck.
National Grid doesn't make it easy to tie these things.
Neither does Aberssos.
Anything else on that?
I just know because it came up at one of our, one of our board meetings was, when was the last time anybody looked at the intersection of high school and the Yale school and cars coming out and trying to make that left onto 123? So it just came up at one of our meetings and figured we'd ask at this meeting if that's been looked at, if there are any options or if we could have someone take a look at some options. I think the point was made that, you know, you've got young drivers from the high school and they have to come out and make that left-hand turn. And that's pretty harrowing for a young driver and seems ripe for an accident. So just don't know what the options would be.
I think the last change we made, and Wade, correct me if I'm wrong here, it's probably about two years ago. And what we did is originally we had both drivers and buses coming in and out of that same entryway. And it was an absolute disaster. At the same time, we had the Yale parents coming in and out over there as well. So what we do now is the buses from the high school go out of that second entrance where the dental office is, and that is closed to students and staff. A few sneak through every now and then, but that is closed to students and staff is primarily for buses. And we did have a crossing guard that was there only just for the buses. There has not been a crossing guard for the students in quite a while that I, that I can recall. So that was probably the last time we looked at that traffic pattern. And at the same time, we changed the Yale school drop off procedure so that way buses were coming in and out of the front of the building and the families are going around back. So again, just like we talked about earlier, it's a larger loop. They're able to get off the street where families that were dropping off in the front were actually out closer to 123 and sometimes even, you know, waiting in the road to, to take that left or right into the parking lot. So it definitely made a big difference, but we can certainly continue to look at it. Our crossing guard retired and with, you know, we saw our way to help our budget and we did not replace that crossing guard there. So we do have a crossing guard at the middle school in the afternoon and that is actually one of our power professionals that does that, that is, you know, a little bit of that's your gang there.
Would that be, if it was a traffic, like the, what they, so you had 123, would it be a state issue? Is that something we can go to the state for?
West Main is.
It's 123.
That state on, East Main's town, West Main's state. But for them to look at it like.
I know it would take 25 years.
To JCS, like.
We're paying for all the engineering work for North and South Worcester Street to speed it up, believe it or not, but it's been going on for about three years now.
I think ultimately too, your traffic issues at any schools due to how many people are dropping their kids off now, you know. So is the underlying issue that you're charging bus fees and people try to save 200 bucks, buy it?
Well, the high school too, you have a lot of drivers.
The high school would be a little different, but the rest of the schools.
A lot of these kids drive.
How much money are you collecting a year in bus fees?
Around 235,000, 140,000.
Which doesn't need to put a debt in the.
Right. Our contract is over a million dollars.
So let's say miraculously, you know, the money tree, 140,000 fell off it, what would the traffic do outside the high school, students?
I think it's important to know that while we bring in the 140, we'd actually need to look at a bigger number in order to say that all, all families, because we're going to have, need more buses. So specifically, when you look at the Yale middle school run, those buses are filled to the brim at this point. So we would absolutely need to look at more buses. So the number would need to be bigger. I would say.
Second money tree.
Twenty, 250?
Should be.
250 to 300 might be closer to the actual number.
I think if, to think about, and this is one of the projects for next year is we're looking at school start times. It doesn't help that we have two schools within 100 yards of each other that have very similar start and end times. You know, like, you know, I drop off my sophomore and as I'm coming out, a bunch of the Yale teachers are coming in to start their day. So it's just, it's this ever-evolving thing where it's, you know, where LG and JCS are kind of outliers on the, on the outsides of town, but you have three schools within a mile and a half of each other at relatively 20, 30 minutes of timeframe then it's just congested. There's, there's not much you can do otherwise. I mean, my youngest is now a sophomore, so I have two others go through. It's been that way for as long as I can remember. And luckily I come down and go to the, you know, take a right-hand turn, but if I'm working from home right at the day, I've taken that left, I'm like, you know, you take a breath and go, you really do.
For, for, for credit fix, is that a line out there?
It is not.
No. Just look into something that, because I mean, when you get out of high school, it's wide enough to go right or left.
To have two lanes.
If you did maybe look at something for lining maybe back to the Yale entrance, you know, maybe that helps a little bit.
I think most people do the two lanes.
No, I know, but when 16, 17-year-old kid's driving, probably might have something one marked out, but that could help a little bit.
I mean, I'd make the argument though, the, the kids are used to it.
Oh, true.
It's folks that travel in that area that maybe, I'll go get my coffee or, you know, maybe I'll go somewhere. It's, it's, I think it's truly, I believe, the people that aren't used to the congestion are the ones that are really.
And I notice nobody stops to let people in or out either, so that it's like kill to be killed and it's like, it just backs it up that much worse.
I mean, it's like the common courtesy, like I'm pulling up, I'm taking a right and so I let that person go, then I go.
And the other one, yeah.
But like, it's the people that are coming from Honeydew continuing, that's, that's where taking that left is.
Gunning is tasty.
Do you, do you think, I know a lot of people say, well, it would be a lot better if there weren't bus fees, but do you really think that changes it? I know like the kids next to, that live next to me, they get a bus for free, but their parents drive them every day. I mean, they'd rather drive them, let them go into school and get off to work rather than, so I don't know if you're gonna, if you got rid of bus fees, I don't know, then oh, good, everyone's going to get on the bus now. I just think there's a lot of people that are still going to drop their kids off.
Especially with after-school activities, you know, dance class, CCB.
A lot of parents are working from home.
Yes.
They have the ability to work from home, so why would they, it's just easier. Instead of kids sitting on a bus for a long period of time, it's just easier to drive them and pick them up. So yeah, I agree. I don't know, I don't know if that would be a deal.
I pay a bus fee and my child takes the bus probably once a week.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, 180 days, you pick up your kid, drop him off, cost you more than 250 bucks and it costs him a year, you know, to go to the school, you know, 300 and whatever that is, 60 times.
Plus, as a 37-year-old mayor, I use both these, I use both of these entrances to go inside when I'm covering the lanterns.
All right, Amy, on something. Just one more question. The middle school, I thought there was discussion about some sort of, something happening in the entrance exit area. What, what's the status of that? Like, I can't remember.
So we have a second egress out there now.
Right, to like the playground, right?
Yeah.
Oh, that was the whole plan, like?
That was the original, remember, right to the state? Remember the state, we tried to get a, to cut a second, or just a second egress way out by the original way and they would not allow us to do that. So we kind of got creative with DPW and we ended up using that other entrance way, creating a one-way in to Tri-Sentennial Park and then a one-way out. It really has helped. If you've noticed right around pickup time, there's been a lot of cars that have parked in that lot. We went to Capitol in the, in the fall, just past fall, trying to get, trying to get some money to get that top code so we could plow in and all that. Asphalt just went through the roof and it was recommended that we just pull back that for now and maybe try again this spring. But that, that has certainly helped, I mean, having that second egress. So anybody leaving this school can go out that way and take a right without Wheaton at all. This exit way here, when you have, I guess there's a Powell Street right there.
Yeah.
That's when you get into that trouble and the cars coming around the corner. This way gets really hot, but as Dr. O'Neil mentioned, we do have a crossing guard out there for our kids at dismissal time for anybody walking or going across the street to be picked up. So we're covering the safety of our, of our students there. And that crossing guard also allows for the buses to stay on time, schedule wisely when the bus is up.
One more question, sorry about the safety, we can move on, because I'm just curious. The blinking lights at the, at Wheaton on 123, so if you're going to cross in the crosswalk, you can hit a button and it's going to blink and you notice it, so you notice someone coming in the crosswalk. Could we ever get that at the middle school and at JCS? I'm someone who runs a lot in town and I'm always, no, people don't stop for me, I almost get hit all the time.
So I have a grant, Christine just.
Is that a state thing?
But I have, she's strange, I think, right? You want to say?
Yeah, we just applied for a grant for one at the middle school, see if they'd help us at the Yale, you know, that State Road, and then at the LG for those exact same lights that are still powered, but flash.
Right, right. See, even my daughter, she does like an after-school thing at middle school and when it was light out, she would, we live on Power Street, so she would walk home, but there, the crossing guard is already done.
Yes.
So yeah, she just, just makes me nervous. It'd be nice to have one.
Wade, there's an emergency exit on the other side of the hedges, on the other side of the bank.
Yes.
That we've had you maintain. Could that almost be done like the high school, maybe, and have the buses do that? Would that change anything?
Buses load up on this side of the building and that is, it's not flat ground over there. You'd have to go up, over, around the tennis courts and downhill to get up. It's really, that is really an emergency entrance or exit.
In Oak Street?
On Oak Street, yeah. I mean, a four-wheel drive Jeep wouldn't get it down. It's like, it's, no, there's no way. We have, I just even find it in.
Okay, not maintained. What do you think? Does it turn onto Oak Street?
But I think to your point, if we can, if we can get some flashing lights out there for crosswalks, that'll certainly be helpful. I do have concern with the one across the street from the Yale school because I believe the state owns that, not us. So we'd have to probably go to the state and get permission to install those crosswalks. We tried to get a crosswalk with Duncan Douglas, was by Freeman Street for the high school students, and that was also denied by the state.
I have a question, just, I'm a huge fan, as a Westerner, of the right turn out at the playground. And I just was curious if there was any complaints or concerns about safety for young children and parents in that parking lot?
I have not received any personally. And I, I think it's really just during that drop off.
Right.
And pickup time. So it's like 15 minutes and I think most parents just, they, they know what's going on and you start to see the, you know, cars filling, so I have not received any complaints at all.
I haven't either.
Parents using the playground. Yeah, so, yeah, some parents would park on one side of, it's not really marked, right? So you could be in theory, if it was busy, parking on the further side and have to be walking, or a child could, you know, a young child could run out. So it is fenced.
It is fenced.
Still, but in the parking lot area, I mean, that would just, I'm glad to hear
Still, but in the parking lot area, I mean, that would just, I'm glad to hear that it's not under safety.
Anything else on that? All right, election planning discussion. We can't do that. Come on, guys.
Lucia, Paige, and Lucia.
Well, I know one of the things is, when we have the town election on that Saturday, April, do you guys remember?
The plan, yes.
So, I mean, there's enough warning that it's the end of April to let soccer know, don't think about having anything on that day. It would really help. And that's something you guys control and fail, so.
Can I ask something before we go on that, Mike? After this town hall and community center, senior center is done, is it planned still to have elections at schools? Or is the plan to move it into a town hall or a community center like other towns do?
Well, I don't, most towns do have middle schools, but, you know, that's something that we'll look at. You probably wouldn't be able to fit all of them, you'd have to split it up somehow and have, the town hall will be fine, the concern would be the parking at the senior center. But there'll be plenty of parking at the town hall, so it could be, easily be done there. But you'd only be able to probably get in two, three at the most precincts.
So it's definitely something that we talked about at our last meeting, because I know that it was Lucia's opinion that, was it the primary?
So we, there's a primary in March, and the request was to close. But we actually were able to work out a really great plan between Wade and Lucia and I to keep the middle school open, and also to keep kids separated from voters. Because that is, you know, that was the reason why we asked to move it out of the high school. It's been working fairly well at the middle school. We just can't give up any more space, and it's, you know, we want to make sure our kids are in school, and, you know, it's gonna be a rough winter. So every day we can get in is better.
I just think going forward, though, we really, just the state of the world and things that happen in schools, I think that we, you know, all collectively really need to take a hard look at this and think what's best. You know, there's a lot of people in the building, you know, when voting is happening and kids are in school, you know, our main priority is to keep kids safe. And that was, I mean, this discussion was a long discussion at one of our last meetings about this. So with new buildings coming on, it would just be nice to maybe have some other thought processes about, you know, maybe moving them off-site where we're gonna have more space. I mean, parking here isn't ideal either. When we made this move from high school to here, we took a lot of slack for that because of the parking issue. So, you know, I think that we could think about kids' safety and. What are the laws around it? Could you have, like, some of the precincts be at, like, the VFW or the library? Could you kind of spread it out that way to not have, not be using the schools? Or are there certain laws that you have to have them in certain type of buildings?
They just really don't want you having them in a religious building.
Right.
And other towns have been multiple locations, it's been.
So from a cost perspective for an election, like, I know, probably going back before we had it at the high school, we had two precincts at the Yale and three at the high school, and vice versa. Is there a way that we can have, say, four or five polling locations, but all precincts are accepted? Because like, I can, I can already see what the narrative looks like if someone goes to the senior center and in their precinct two, and precinct two's supposed to be a town hall. It's, I can see it, I can see it already happening that way. But if we, can we do a smaller scale at, like, three polling locations, but all precincts are accepted there?
The more you split it up, the more expensive it gets, because you have to have a police officer at everyone, and then I don't know what Lucia has to do as far as staffing, having someone in charge at each location.
Police, you have to have police at each one?
How did it go last week, by the way?
We didn't have it.
I can't believe all of you missed a joke.
And then at nine AM, we got our phone call.
Well, somebody, somebody was looking for a ride, and I was like, am I missing something?
I said to Lucia, you ought to do a poll, ask these people, who are you voting for? It's like, you just go to the polls.
We did have a few people show up here. Did you really?
So, yeah, Mike, I have a question. I know, imagine this briefly in the meeting, and I probably asked for not, like, we have a lot of discussion, but on the Saturday ones, what is the concern that we're trying to alleviate by asking soccer to not?
There's a parking problem.
Yes. Is there?
I've never noticed it, and I've done soccer, I've done, I've pulled out.
If we were pulling bigger numbers than we are for voting, I would share your concern, but.
I know, we had a lot of complaints the last time people that came to vote.
I think it's mostly older folks who, if it's, you know, the side entrance, there's nowhere to really, I mean, there's that big parking lot, but then you still have to walk all the way halfway around.
It's a walk.
It's a walk. And that driveway right there is what's closest, and so they try to have older folks, or have you have folks parked there.
Right.
But that's where everybody's also, you have to go around the building, so everybody's coming in and out of there. And I think they make it one way. For soccer, they do, I think, for elections, they do.
I mean, again, for me, it just makes sense to close the fields. We're doing voting on a Saturday. There's no reason why any probably cannot close Saturday. We can tell them at noon or whatever, three o'clock, when the polling's over, but we're dying down.
Let me play devil's advocate. You're also getting more people out to vote because they're already there for soccer.
Right. They wouldn't want it that way to vote.
So you're gonna tell people now.
Does that work? We have like one percent turnout.
Maybe we have half a percent of soccer wasn't there.
People right here, still, you know.
On the other, I mean, on the major elections, I know most communities, either they close or they have a professional development day for the teachers. I know, like, my wife's teach in two different communities, and then, you know, even last week, she had a professional development day on Tuesday, no students. So why don't we just, if you know the presidential election scheduled ten years out, why don't we just schedule a professional development day or to close that day? One of the two.
So the last presidential election in 2020, we did close in November. And we will do the same thing for the presidential election this year, whether we host a professional development day or we're just closed, then we'll make that decision. Our teacher's contract is a hundred and eighty-two days. So we typically do a welcome back day, PD day, and then we do the professional development day the day after. That's helpful, because we kind of try to front-load a lot of training for our staff. If you're looking at new technology or a new curriculum program, it's better to give them that support, and then we have the half-day throughout the course of the year. We could not add an additional day contractually, that would, that would be a significant cost to the district for that. Or we can just save our day and move it to November, depending on what we have in our agenda in terms of training.
I mean, once you get into the calendar, you know, if we're scheduled to have school that day, the best we can do is a half-day. We can't cancel school for something such as that, like, you know.
They do in every other community. Why is it doing different than?
If you have the voting schedule, I mean, we make our calendar two years at a time.
You have, you have the election schedule? You don't know when the presidential election is?
The presidential one, as she mentioned, we're closed.
Yeah.
These are state primaries, which can vary, and the town one, luckily moved to Saturday.
It's a big town.
Presidential election is March 5th, and the president-elect is November 5th, and the town is, primary election is March 5th.
Yeah, I think Lucia mentioned at your meeting, I think, she said she didn't know until what the state election was until a couple of weeks ago, right?
And we'd already voted on our calendar.
Right, right.
And, I mean, as we all know, we're parents in the room. Once you have that in your schedule, hey, go to school, to take it off, someone's gotta be out, it's, you know, babysitters is a nightmare, you know, so it's very difficult to do. I mean, I think anytime we do have an election, from the standpoint, I do think the town, we need to really stop looking at somewhere else to go. I mean, it's, like everyone said, the safety concerns of marching however many people through this building, you know, I know it's a little bit safer just because we can block the doorways and whatnot, but to me, it's just a recipe for disaster, you know? The parking here, in school, it's just, to me, it makes no sense. And I don't know the whole religious thing, but across the way, there's a nice gymnasium right over there. I know it's not a part of the really church anymore, I know it is technically a part of the St. Mary's, but that would be a nice area. Big parking lot, huge area, you can go in multiple doors, could be an area to look at, again, if laws are good parking.
I think the law frowns on it because some people can't step in other denominations' spaces.
Yeah, but some other communities do do that as well. But, I don't know.
So it probably makes sense to maybe table us to the next joint meeting and when Lucia can be here, right? Because I think she's the piece we're missing for this whole conversation, because she could tell us more about the new buildings, and so I think maybe, hopefully we plan to do this again, you know? So I think maybe we do that, table us, want to talk to her.
I'll use that for school for a while, actually, use the St. Mary's.
St. Mary's.
Yeah. So it's kind of separate from the churchy area versus now, like you said, and can all this.
One more question, I'm not sure if this was discussed recently, the Saturday town elections, have the hours been extended for that?
Eight to five.
Eight to five.
Yeah. Yeah. We didn't think, just some background, we didn't think eight, like, seven to eight was necessary or feasible with the volunteers we get. I don't want to take words out of Lucia's mouth, but that's essentially what we said.
A little later than three.
But we thought a little later than three was fair, so we set them on eight to five.
And the primary and national elections will be seven days.
I think they have to be.
They have to be seven days.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? Good? Okay, so we'll move on to the FY25 budget process timeline, all of you. Do you want to start, Mike?
I'll start.
All right.
So I'll be asking the select board at the November 30th meeting to schedule a town meeting for our May 13th. And so on December 1st, a notice would go out to all departments that the warrant is open, and the deadline for submission, let me see, did I? So the warrant would close on, counting the days back. For FY25, Capitol budget requests would be December 20th, and with all backup materials. And then the warrant, the, sorry, the budget process would start on January 25th in the general government budget with all town departments. And then your hearing usually is near the end of January. And the school will provide ballpark numbers by February 26th. And then the final school budget would be due on March 18th, which is eight prior to town meeting.
Is that March 18th?
Yes. And then the FinCom would have their well-attended public budget hearing on April 8th.
Is that gonna be at the high school? Do we have a party for that?
Police presence.
As long as there's no soccer.
Kids, soccer kids, school.
And Capitol will probably do the same thing that we've been doing the last couple of years. We have one meeting where everyone comes in and presents, and makes things easier. And then Capitol's recommendation would be done by April 12th.
Like, do we know, or, Jen, does, like, Southeastern or the Aggies have any, I know the last couple of years, like, we all had a project or something that we had to pay into for their renovations. Do we have any of that from them, do we know?
We do with the Aggie.
Yeah.
That's coming up?
Yeah. That was about seven thousand was our assessment on that issue.
So say the increase of the overall budget was about five million, that was across all the different.
From the school side, we shared this really fancy purple infographic with all of you tonight. This kind of lays out the annual process that we, that we go by during the schools. On November 1st, we actually kicked off the budget season with our principals and department heads. They all have their information that they need to get the party started, get all their requests in, and take a look at what their needs are for this year. We begin with a zero-balance budget, which means we are asking them to really start fresh and take a look at what the needs are. All of the requests will be due to Christine December 4th, this is earlier than we typically have this. And the reason for that is we want to make sure that we're having a lot of conversations, not just Christine and I, with the building principals and all of our directors and coordinators, but also together as, as a administrative team. We know that the pie is never big enough, and so therefore, it's really important for us as a team to sit down and have conversations about what our priorities are as a school system. Last week or earlier in November, I shared this same infographic with our families through my newsletter, and I talked about the fact that we really are looking for a level of services budget for the upcoming school year. We want to make sure that we are able to maintain the high level of instruction, teaching and learning, and quality services for all of our students. That is our priority. And I know I don't need to explain to the finance committee or to the select board, but maybe for everyone watching at home, a level of service budget means that we are looking for the same level of services. It is an increase in funding over the current year. Christine and I have been starting to look at what our obligations are for the upcoming year in terms of contracts. This coming year, our teacher's contract is the highest, it's a 2.75 increase, so I think that's important for all of you to know. A few concerns that we have coming forward, I think it's really important. The finance committee has heard these concerns before when we met in late September. For the upcoming school, for the current school year, we have current, we have a few concerns already about our budget. Number one is just a really challenging, it's really challenging to find substitute teachers right now. We have a lot of staff members that are maybe out or dealing with their own medical issues or family medical issues. It's really, really difficult to find someone to come in and be with our students on days. There are days where, here at the middle school or at the high school, we have students that are in the cafeteria or in the auditorium with an administrator, with one teacher, because we do not have the staffing or the capacity to have a teacher or a substitute in a single room. All of our principals are constantly providing coverage. All of our, a lot of our specialists, such as reading interventists or paraprofessionals, are providing coverage. And the thing that I'm most concerned about is that students aren't getting what they need when other educators are being pulled to provide substitute coverage. We very recently hired permanent building subs, which means it's a person that is there at JCS every day, at LGN every single day, so it's a guaranteed person. And it's, sometimes it's really nice, because for that person, it's a guaranteed job every single day. Still starts at the same rate for our substitutes, a hundred dollars a day, and then if they're there for more than ninety days, it goes up to a hundred thirty. So we did that.
Question, Jen?
Yes.
So as far as the substitutes, do you think it's a lack of people available to work, or do you think it's like the wage that might be not high enough compared to maybe other towns?
I honestly, I think that it just really is a lack of people that are able to work. Recently, our new assistant superintendent, Dr. Ackman, and Courtney McCollin, who is our HR coordinator, hosted a substitute info session. We had actually had eighteen people come out at night to learn about being a substitute in more public schools and to start the paperwork process. Not all eighteen have completed their packets and brought them back in, but we thought that was a really encouraging sign, and we did get a few more subs from that. We've also had a nice return of Wheaton students that are interested in subbing a couple of days a week based on what our class schedule is. Another thing that we're trying is hourly subs, so.
Repeat that again, what was it?
Hourly substitute.
Oh, hourly, okay.
Yep. So, for example, one of our champion staff members at JCS has availability from when the kids go to class until like one. So sometimes Mr. Ryan is subbing from nine to one when he has to go to his other job. And it works out, and we pay him the hourly rate instead of the daily rate. I know sometimes families, a mom or dad might have a few hours in the day, they're not able to make the commitment to the whole day, so we're trying to share that information with people. Because having a substitute for even part of the day is better than not having a substitute at all. So we're trying to be really creative in that regard. The other thing that's concerning for this current year is just the increase of our district costs. In the packet that we shared with you, there is, on the third page, it says out-of-district tuition from transportation costs. It looks like this, it has the pink down the bottom. I think it's really important for all of us to look at that very bottom number. Five point one one seven million dollars is our current commitment to out-of-district special education costs along with tuitions.
Has this number changed since the September meeting?
It has.
What's the change? I don't, I know I have it at home, but.
Yeah, I don't have it with me either. Yeah, I don't have it with me either. I believe there are about four more placements there. So let me get back to you on that, Zach.
No worries.
We can figure that out there. It was 4.7. 4.7, okay, thank you, Paula. So as you can see, that number is always fluctuating. We have students that have specific needs. And it is, we're not always able to accommodate their needs here in Norton. Sometimes they just need more than we are able to offer, or we don't have the staff that is specially trained in those areas to work and support our students. So as you can see, there are, you know, a lot of collaborative opportunities, some private, and then we also have a few students that are residential. This, everything that is pink on the bottom has been new since we got our budget allocation at town meeting last May.
So the million-dollar question is, where are you coming up with $400,000 from September to now?
We're trying to be very creative. And that's the challenge, right? We always have some contingency built in. We do not have a $400,000 contingency built in. So we're looking really carefully at all of the lines. Our budget has been frozen since September 1st, which means we have not been purchasing anything, all those supply lines. If you did not get your orders in prior to that, sometimes the answer will be no. I did ask our director of people personnel services and our coordinator, special ed, Vinnie Sarcini and Casey Frusso, to join us here tonight. I think it's really important that while we can't share a lot of details with you because we need to make sure that we're protecting our students' privacy, I think it's really important for us to have a conversation as three town boards here to talk about the significant changes that we're seeing. Our students have very significant needs that are our biggest concern for the budget moving forward. So I don't know, Vinnie or Casey, if you guys want to.
Yeah, again, it's, you know, having to be careful, so because we have to be aware of confidentiality. But what I can tell you as the, sort of the, again, this is kind of generalizing, but I would say in our secondary programs, we're seeing a pretty significance, like mental health needs, both ones that we're dealing with in the schools directly, by speaking to a lot of staff. And then some that are significant enough that really goes beyond what we can manage in a public school setting, maybe very specific interventions. We also have students with some significant medical issues as well that again require very specialized staff, very specialized programming. Anytime we work with a family around an out-of-district placement, we absolutely involve community members, experts, but also our own consultants to see how we cover every possibility of doing this in district. Because again, our belief is that we should be doing everything we can to keep students in their neighborhood schools. But it's what we're seeing, and we're not alone. The listservs for special education directors are kind of blown up with the same concerns, the level of concerns. And then for our younger students, elementary students, especially our really younger population, we're seeing them coming in with significant, significant needs in terms of behavioral, academic, social communication needs. So we're seeing increases in our numbers in our specialized programs, which puts a lot of pressure on our ability to maintain and train the staff in order to put those even higher needs students to be maintained here. Again, not, we're not alone. This was a discussion at the statewide conference of special education administrators the other day with the Department of Ed. The group of special education administrators has put together essentially a poll across the state of all of us, trying to kind of talk to the state about the needs that we're seeing with the students pre-K to.
Earlier ages that we're seeing.
First, second grade. We're seeing lots of behavioral concerns, difficulties, being able to maintain their emotional regulation. So even for those students not going out of district, the amount of students that we're seeing that need more intensive services within our schools has gone up tremendously. And you can talk about the state, I think, Christine, if I'm right, between last year and this year, the private schools, the state has located a 20% increase in their tuition rates.
Over the past two years.
Over the past two years.
20% increase in what, I'm sorry?
20% tuition rate increase. Many of the private schools that specialize in managing these high-needs students in their needs, they get a 20% increase across the board. That doesn't include transitations, which has gone through the, it's a used technical term. We're seeing anywhere between $260 and $600 a day in transportation, depending on where we're going in common states. We work with other communities, try to, you know, combine routes whenever we can or put, you know, students, obviously from Norton, we'll put them on the same band if it's something that we could do. Those are all big pressures that we're not only feeling, again, here in Norton, but it's kind of across the state or in some cases across the country.
Paul O'Neill, last year's, or this current year's budget had a 26% ask initially. And I said that that was what was a true level-service out-of-the-game budget for this current year. Like you said, the pie's not there for that kind of a chunk. So if you're looking at that as an honest thing for next year, with all these other costs and the fact that you've got some other grants ongoing, so you'd be looking at another 10%, 10% ask. And it's just a contingency, is it, is there another plan B? Again, like I said, realistically, if you were to cover your raises at 2.7 and stuff, you know, so.
Absolutely. I think the biggest challenge for us as a school system is exactly that, right? The needs of a public school system are infinite. We're always going to have things that we need to work on. We always talk about mandated services, our obligations to our special education students. But money's fine, and I understand that, and we as a group understand that. It's really about prioritizing. And I think the biggest thing, last year, we were very fortunate to get that extra chunk of money from the finance committee and from town meeting to help support those mandated costs, which was great because we did not have to make additional cuts from general education. And I know cuts is the funny word here, right? When I say that, I mean, you know, taking away positions in order to pay for other mandated costs. That's the reality of the situation for us, is that the needs of our special education students, costs are rising so exponentially. There's really nowhere else for us to cut as a system. You know, last year, we talked about concerns around music and world language and other programs that are so essential to looking at and teaching the whole child. We don't have a huge amount of staff that is extra. We don't have a lot of programs that are extra. It's really important for us as the three boards and administration, you know, department leaders here, to continue having the conversations so we can all understand the challenges that we're seeing in our schools and in our classrooms each and every day. And we can understand as a community that the game has changed.
State legislatures, it would be Steve Howard and whatnot, as far as trying to change the rules to get more funding, yeah, I think that's part of it, is there's going to be more funding provided by the state.
And as you know, I'm sure Dr. Brietta mentioned this many, many times. The Student Opportunity Act was the state's answer to looking at funding education in a more equitable way. 50% of that formula comes from low-income percentages in a community. A community like Norton doesn't have that high number of low-income families. And so therefore, we are only getting the minimum state aid at this time. Last year, it was $60. Because of the decreased rate of inflation this year, they are saying that it will probably be less than $60, and it could go all the way back down to 30. So we're already hearing that at the state level. It's really unfortunate because when you look at the Chapter 70 Foundation budget, so much of it is out of our hands at the local level. You know, all of the federal monies and the state monies, it really comes down to the demographics, and we are not in that camp of really leading communities. So the majority of it has to come from our local, which makes it really difficult.
And on the legislative side, I mean, my concern is how many hundreds of millions can they keep putting into the immigration system?
Oh, now you're going down a rabbit hole.
I know that. I'm just saying, when, you know, it's going to start affecting us, it's not a bottomless pit there either. So unless they get federal help, I don't know what's going to happen there. But it's going to start affecting the revenue that's available.
And the timing of the state budget is always after we have to have ours incorrect.
Yes, so. They start with some rough estimates of numbers in December. The government will present her budget in January, but they typically do not have a voted final budget until June. This year, it was almost the end of July. She had a little bit of extra time, I think, coming into that role as a new governor. So it's really difficult because we don't know until after the town is really putting their budget. We have an idea, but not set in stone. I think one of the other things that's important for all of us to realize is that the COVID funding that was available for a number of years, the ESSER grants, E-S-S-E-R, all of those funds have to be spent by September 30th of 2024. So this is our last year having that extra money, so to speak. We currently are using about $500,000 of ESSER funds in our FY24 budget, and that will be gone for FY25. So it's important for all of us to know that we're kind of starting behind the eight ball on that one. We're very fortunate to have so many students and families that choose Norton for their students through school choice. School choice is keeping us alive. It started, it was just curriculum and technology, and now we are paying, using it to pay the staff.
I have a very basic question, but as I'm looking at this tuition and tuition expenses chart, I just don't understand, like the pink one says they're new. Are they new schools that are coming online that were?
So those are new student placements. So anything above the pink line, we knew about when we presented our budget last spring and brought our requests to town meeting. Anything from 28 down are either students that have moved in, placements that may have changed. Each of these numbers is an individual student.
Gotcha.
So, or students that moved to town, or students that their needs changed, they each in. You'll see number 29, that student was a private day student, and now they are residential. So that $176,000, that's the difference we were paying from a private day to residential.
Because it's the same percent.
Gotcha. Yeah, and at the.
I think that makes sense.
At the bottom, you can actually see too, we had some placement changes, which actually allowed a savings of about $196,000. So we're able to reallocate those money towards new placements. And then we also had $170,000 contingency that was built into our budget last year. And that's fine, so. Am I inspiring you, Zach?
No, I'm having a comment here. So, easy math. You got $500,000 in federal money you're not going to see anymore. You get $700,000 from stabilization account, 1.2 million. You got $400,000 here. Before any increases, you're $2 million in the hole. At what point are we going to warn the families in town that folks, because money's just not going to appear. This is the disaster that's going to be next, you know, FY next year.
I think you just did.
The three people that watch this thing.
We've been saying this for so long.
I understand, I understand. But as I said before, we've been saying it, but that cliff has never come. It's always somehow, some way. And I'm saying, if these numbers are all accurate, you can go, I don't even come close to the money you're looking for, not even close. So at what point are we going to reach out to families and say, hey, you know what? You're going to have, this is the result of what's going to happen. Because the money's just not, it's just not there.
Well, unfortunately, until, like what just happened last year, when we say we're cutting X, Y, and Z, that's when parents start to realize, oh, they're serious. Oh, something's really going to happen, you know? And people have asked me point-blank, why don't you hold, why don't you hold to that and be accountable to what you are saying in those meetings? And because if something happens or staff leaves and we have the money to refill a position so that we can have for us, I can't look in kids' faces and say, I just cut that because to make a point. That's not why we sit here.
And I agree with you, but I'm saying, these numbers here are a lot larger than what we've talked about in the past, if they're all accurate. If they all pan out, I mean, you got, you're going to have a $4 million hole to fill. And that's just, you know, quick math.
And so the budget process is always fluid.
Yeah, I understand that.
You know, these are different numbers that we are talking about today than we were six weeks ago when we had this meeting at the end of September. So as much as we can say it's going to be this number, that number is always going to change. What we are trying to do, and I sent it out on November 1st, I'm going to try and do the same on December 1st, is an update for families in my newsletter showing, this is where we're at, this is what we're asking for, this is what we think is going to be happening. You have to kind of ease them in. I didn't want to say, hey, by the way, you know, November 1st, you might as well just forget it and go home. It's really important because I think the staff in Norton, our teachers, our custodians, our, everyone that is here all day long works day in and day out tirelessly to support our students. So I hate to paint that doom and gloom picture because we are great. Like, we are doing well, and our kids are doing well. And it's a really great place for kids and families. And so I want to focus on the positive there. But we will absolutely see changes that are going to come down for the following year if we are not able to look at this from a level-service perspective. And, you know, the first thing we're going to have to do is we're going to have to look at staffing positions. What are those staffing positions that we're using ESSER funds for? And can we absorb that? Can we say, okay, maybe we don't need this position? Or maybe we could share staff across buildings? But we're pretty limited and spread thin as it is.
I think that's the importance of having meetings like this, right? Where all of us are sitting at a table and in-person having these discussions, right? Because we can't do this alone. Jen can send out as many emails as she wants to families. Families are overwhelmed with emails, they're not fully reading what she's saying. And it really is until the cuts are coming that people kind of wake up and say, oh, here we are. So we have conversations like this, and you guys are talking about it in your meetings and your meetings, then, you know, maybe, or in soccer fields or wherever, you know, maybe then people start to realize it is not just the school department crying that we're going to have this problem, that this is a real problem for our community.
A part of the truth, as you mentioned, is that you're almost, we're almost our own worst enemies because we do shuffle the deck and make it work every year. So we hint that it's, the sky is falling, and then suddenly it's a blue-sky deck. And again, it's, the cliff keeps getting pushed down the road, but it's, I don't think it can get much further.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, it's.
And I think that's exactly it, you know? School choice, you know, before we had school choice, that cliff was much closer. We've been able to maintain and enhance with that funding. I'm very nervous about if that funding were to go away, it's not a guarantee. And if, you know, we are sharing this tale of woe and saying how things are going to be decimated, those school choice families are not going to come. And that's, you know, number one, it's a huge thing for our students. And our school choice students are our students, you know, this is their, this is their school, and this is what they know. But for all of us, like, that's money out the window. And then also, two, the ESSER funding over those COVID years, like, that was a saving grace for us. A lot of communities were able to use that money for one-time expenses, new curriculum programs or, you know, a staff, tutors, or whatever it might have been, program, at least summer programs. We had to use it to actually keep the lights on. And so therefore, that's why we've just kept pushing this cliff down the road. And I don't see a parachute coming. So we have to figure out what the plan will be as a community.
I think, like you said, we had to find a line we have to walk, right? Because when my oldest was starting, or we were looking at kindergarten, was when we were going for an override attempt, and it was a lot of doom and gloom. And a lot of people pulled their kids and went to charter school and weren't paying. Those were probably our highest numbers for a number of years, paying to the 2 million dollars a year to the charter school.
It was paying $2,000,000.
Yeah. Because people were scared. They thought that it wasn't a good place to be and it wasn't a good place to put their kids. And, you know, I'm grateful that I chose Norton schools for both of my boys, you know, in spite of that, because it has worked out well, but it is, it's a fine line. You have to walk, right? I don't, I don't know what the right answer is. I don't know that any of us do, but just having these discussions, I think, is important.
So on the town side, will we do the same? We'll be instructing departments to start the level services budget. Some of the big things we have on our side is this March is the end of the safety grant for firefighters. So that is about 250,000 for firefighters. Our payment to CEMRAC, which is the regional dispatch, increases 150,000 in FY25. And then the other big thing, I don't know how we do it, but you know, it all depend on funds available. The town did vote to form a public works department. For us to do that, that's not cheap. So that's something else we'll be have to look at. And then the senior population is growing and we just can't do it with just budgeted one full-time person and one part-time person. We really need a director, another position, assistant to the director and clerical staff person. So there's gonna have to be money put to that to next year.
I'll tell you, Joe said it for a while and he would always say Norton has decided the kind of community that it wants to be when it grows up. And I think we're at that point, right? I mean, this community really needs to decide what we want to do. And I know everyone hates the word override, but you know, I think at this point, it's it's no longer something to be proud of that we've never passed one. You know, this is a community, you know, and I've said it before, when times are bad, I've never seen a community come together stronger than Norton does. You know, when somebody, a person needs help or an organization needs help, this, this community comes together like no other. But for some reason, when we're talking about all of this stuff, it's a huge divide. And I, you know, not that I'm saying I'm doing this again, but I just think it's something that needs to be talked about and we really need to decide who we want to be. And I think it's, you know, like we've noticed before with other things we've done, we're always stronger and we're doing it together and not apart.
But the flip side is the aging community, like, like you said, though, you get those seniors that are on a very, very fixed income, getting their miniscule coal raises every year or whatever.
I can tell you it's the same for the parents of two qual because like we have the, you know, clubs we need to pay for and, you know, just the cost of everything these days, you know? I think about, you know, parents that are younger than me, you know, raising young kids, it's, it is not easy. It is not easy all around. I don't know what the answer is, but I just.
I said at the last budget meeting, the system's broken.
Yeah.
That's something. Well, the system from the state around education is broken.
You know, I think another wild card too is, you know, if Norton is growing in population with some of these new construction projects, you know, whether it's an apartment, a new housing development, now we're, we're still, you know, reissuing the wheel that it's going to affect the schools, it's going to affect the public services. I mean, it's, it's just this another generation of influx. I mean, if that big project on Pine Street has a bunch of elementary school students, they might not be going to LG. You know, it's just, it's one of those other things that we can't project. We can't project what these, you know, four-bedroom McMansions are gonna go for and how many kids are gonna influx or how many police or fire. I mean, I know police and fire have added some staff, thankfully, as, as we all appreciate. They're getting their levels back up. But, you know, it's just this never-ending cycle and, you know, I know the business part seems to be doing pretty good, but I mean, the new apartment complex is 100 something units of one and two bedrooms. What is there, 40 houses on Pine Street? It's just, you know, still, we're not seeing the contributing things to the budget yet, but we're seeing the cliff.
Yeah, I would think a 2.5% increase for, to maintain public safety for these kinds of projects coming into town for police and fire, that's not gonna cut it, in a way.
And, you know, we're putting in a bike trail, we're putting in new sidewalks and then we say to public works, do it with what you have, yeah, as we add it more and more.
And speaking of 2008, I found this article that Bill Kovaev wrote, and the town of Norton is unique in many ways, but our capstone's architecture community has never approved it. All architects built it more than 25 years since construction turned out became law.
And that was 15 years ago.
15 years ago.
I'm just not, I'm just not sure that it's gonna pass again, though. That's the problem. I just, I just don't see the appetite in Norton. It's always been such a bizarre place that way, you know? I think it had a better chance back when it was the first thrown out there than it would now with everything else going on. And I just, as I said, I don't know what the solution there is.
Well, I think it takes that communication, you know, because we, you know, whether it was good, bad, or different, we only heard from the schools a lot of those times. And, you know, we're hearing that there might be potential DPW funding, CEMRAC. So we're hearing things that could be potentially, you know, not up to the budget levels. But, you know, we really need to take a hard look at how damaging could this be for Norton if, you know, the, again, the funding isn't there. We're all creative. People have been creative for years, but the town needs to seriously sit back and, you know, we have to have these hard conversations and it's going to take, you know, maybe, you know, we look back at when we were talking about these programs that are being announced at the end of the school year that might not be coming back. To me, that's too late to be announcing something like that because the budget's already been passed, the money's, you know, been allocated. We need to be having these harder discussions in February, March, when we're looking at these budgets and saying, you know, police isn't getting X, fire isn't getting X, DPW's not getting X, schools aren't getting X. Well, we need to make up X somehow.
I don't know what the timeframe is, but I think that sooner is definitely the only way that's gonna possibly survive. My goal thing is to give an update quicker.
We always talk about it after the budget to you and as we're approaching town meeting. And I think those discussions need to be during, you know, this budgeting season as opposed to after, because after, the money's already allocated, it's just now we're all like, well, I didn't get my fair share and I didn't get my fair share. And it looks to a point like sour grapes, but it's, it's the real reality of it that the money can't go to everyone. No one, you know, we're not driving around in, you know, gold covered anything in this town. So it's just, we're, we're living by, you know, the fringe.
So I think it's also really important for us to look at all the different things that we're doing too in order to bring money in. Whether it's entitlement grants or competitive grants. We have some new curriculum materials this year that we were able to purchase because of competitive grants. We have some new social emotional, like, professional development for staff that was all paid for competitive grants. So we are really looking at ways to bring in additional funds to the district. It's just simply not enough. And I think it's also really important to, from my perspective at least, I don't want to speak for anyone else, is that we are only successful as a community if we're all succeeding, right? If the schools are successful and the other departments are not, then we are not succeeding as a community. And we really want to make sure that we're all getting what we need. So I don't want the narrative to be that the school wants to take money away from other departments because that is absolutely not what we want to do. That is not our intention at all. We are just trying to share with you what our arguments are.
And I think, I'm kidding. We live in a democracy and I think it should be on the ballot. You put them up to vote for it, you know, whether I agree with it or not, it should be on the ballot. We live in a democracy. This is what's gonna happen if we don't get the money. This is what's gonna happen if we do get the money. You put it on the ballot. And I don't think it needs to be this huge campaign and say, hey, this is, this is what it is. Decide. Everybody's a big boy, big girl. Put a ballot box aside. This is, this is what happens if you pass it. This is what happens if you don't. And everybody can make their own decisions, what's best for their family.
Jeff?
So select board, put it on the ballot, see what happens.
Well, legitimately, it should be something that's brought up sooner than later.
You can't make the big bucks over there.
But I think at meetings like this, when there are three boards sitting here and talking about this, you know, maybe somebody or a few people will say, oh, you know, it's not just one group. It's not just, you know, it's, there shouldn't be groups pitted against each other. It shouldn't.
Yeah, I'll agree, I'll agree with Zach that, yeah, it's a democracy.
We can put it out there, people are gonna vote on it. But it's not going to not be divisive in the, in the town. So you have to figure out what is, what is it that, I think Dr. O'Neill summed it up well. You know, then how are we all succeeding? How are we all coming together to do something that doesn't just make us one part of our community a success? Something that makes the entire community a success. I don't know how you get there, but that's gotta be messaging and communication and all of these, all of the boards and all of the committees coming together to try to figure out what that, what that looks like. And then you present that to the community. And if we, if, if we could all come together on something that makes sense and works and makes, makes it successful to the community, put an override out there, I'd be all for it. You know, I just, I know there's challenges. I know there's challenges. How much, how much are you paying right now for, for groceries? How much are you paying for, how much are we paying for, for new facilities, which were sorely needed facilities? So these are things that, they're not, they're not things that can't be overcome. They can be overcome in order to do what's best for the community. It's just, how do we overcome them? How do we get, how do we get the message out there?
Yeah, well, we haven't actually started paying for the facilities yet, right?
I believe it is.
Stuff you borrow.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Last year would have been a little bit and this year will be more.
So, you know, so I, I see the challenges. I, I mean, I think, but I, you know, I, I, I'm not the greatest mathematician in the world, but if we had passed the override that we last voted on, that was last voted against, I believe it was, would have been fiscal year 2018.
2018.
Thank you, Speaker. We'd have, I think, somewhere around $2.5 to $3 million more on our budget right now. So think about that. And that's before, you know, that's just, that's just taking the number and just increasing it 2.5% over the last six years.
So does it make sense at this point, you know, Mike and Jen, for you guys to kind of meet with James?
It's usually where Joe took me to lunch.
She's the doel. It's like, seems like we have a fair turn.
In doubt, it's closing.
It'll be nice when it's done.
Wendy's is a win.
Taco Bell. Right. That's an R. It was an important order.
We'll figure something out, Mike.
Yeah. I think that maybe if the two leaders start to meet with, you know, Christine and James and, and kind of really put on paper what, what it looks like for our community to, to grow and get to a certain point, then, you know, then we can have discussions with, you know, our boards and then kind of do this. You know, we, before COVID, we were doing this regularly. We were trying to do it quarterly, right? And we kind of got away from that a little bit, but I think it's important to kind of come back and sit at a table like this and kind of digest what you two come up with and, you know, try to cover the plan.
That is a good suggestion because I do remember the time that the school business manager and the town accountant took Joe and I to lunch.
Let's give a better idea.
As long as it wasn't the chair of the committees, we're good. Does anybody have anything else or any other business?
Touch on what Kevin said. I think, you know, you need to define what you need, what other needs.
Priorities.
And we're the priority, you know, the seniors are gonna get more people for staffing. Maybe on the school side, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna get more money, but people want to feel like they're getting something back. They're saying, you know, maybe we can eliminate a bus fee. You know, maybe, you know, people want to say, okay, you're gonna take more tax, what am I getting out of the same thing? People don't, you know. So everybody's got to get in the game, whether it's public works, whether it's seniors, whether it's
Close a fire station.
A fire station, you know, all of the above, I mean. What is that number? Today, we don't know what that number is.
I think also, Zach, I think transparency in the process is critical. It's, you can't come to the town, you know, you can't come to the town and ask for something unless you're completely transparent with the process that got you to whatever it is that you're asking for. So whatever happens, that's what I would like to see. I'd like to see a completely transparent process. These are the numbers. Make them easy to understand. Summarize them well, clearly communicate them. And we'll do everything we can to, to help set up meetings, educational meetings, whatever it is, to try to, to try to get the word out there. But I think transparency in the process is, is critical, especially in Norton.
Breaking it down to what the individual person might see as an increase.
Right.
And I'll just go in there and in order to park the rec, I'm gonna say, wouldn't it be nice to have a full-time parking rec person at some point?
That should be, that should be a whole in the mix as well.
HR, vacation. Yeah. I mean, that's what I, I was listening to you talk about priorities and I'm like, well, you wait to hear IT, HR, you know, parks and rec and they're, they just keep getting pushed down, right? Because
And I think the HR would save, save its salary just in what it saves by not having employees sometimes that are, should either cut loose or not, where they hang around, so they have the appropriate HR to handle it.
And just because something's not funded, doesn't mean the need, the need goes away. It just compounds.
Right. So would it be a realistic goal then for us to maybe try to do this again, say, January? Get through the rest of, I mean, that's like a month and a half. Would that give the two of you guys enough time to, I mean, I know it's tough, huh?
To get lunch.
To get lunch? Fight over who's buying? You know, is that, does that make sense to anybody else to get back together with all three boards in January and have another discussion?
What is the process to put something on the ballot? I'm not familiar with it. You need segments, what, I mean, you know? The select board, you put it on the ballot? I was right the first time, put it on the ballot.
It's gonna pass both the ballot and then
Yeah, you need a specific amount, right? A specific amount. So we'd have to, we'd have to work on coming up with that specific amount.
So it doesn't have to pass town meeting. What happens is if you, if, say you had an override on the ballot in April and it passed, but then it's up to town meeting to appropriate the, the budgets. They don't have to spend all the money. It's up to town meeting to decide.
So it's just a ballot that gives you the funds?
Opportunity to go.
So what would that timeline be? What is the deadline to put something like that on the ballot?
I'll have to double check what they're sharing. And then the other way is if you had a budget passed at town meeting, say town meeting approved a budget with all this that were to require, it would be a budget that's subject to a vote if you went after town meeting.
You can do it in both ways, both ways.
But our town meeting is usually after.
People typically do the election first because you're already holding an election, town election, and then you have the town meeting to appropriate it. Because reversing costs more in theory.
But to that point, if that is questionable during the town election, that would be the one time that we'll see some progress.
Do you need to spend the hours from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
All right. So we'll schedule then, we'll work together to get another meeting in January altogether. Does anybody have anything else or any other business? No?
We'll let it sit until our next meeting because we have to go, not enough of us.
Are we ready to make a motion to adjourn? You guys all set? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. So do we have a motion to adjourn, school meeting?
So motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, the favor. Aye.